I'd like to call to order the, what's today's date? The March 13th meeting of the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee. Would you take your call, please?
Alderman Wesley. Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Lewatan. Alderman Shawkey.
Here.
Alderman Cadella.
Here.
Alderman Winger. Alderman Coles.
Yeah.
Alderman Kneip.
Here.
I'm sure the other members will be showing up soon. First item is approval of minutes of February 28th, 2008. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
I second it.
All in favor? Any comments? Any questions? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. First item is a report, and not really a recommendation. Oh, I'm sorry. It is. Report and recommendation, the petitioner, Elmhurst Builders, requests a subdivision of the Arbor Woods subdivision. This re-subdivision would create one additional single-family residential lot within the subdivision. The lot would be located on an existing outlot, which was set aside previously for detention facilities, and the detention facility is no longer necessary for the development due to the improvement of the other Lamar, Lanar detention facilities which benefit this development. Would the petitioner like to give us an explanation?
Certainly. My name is Taren Zimmer. I'm the attorney on behalf of Arbor Woods. Unfortunately, Mr. Judas, who is the president of Elmhurst Builders and Developers, was hospitalized and was not able to be here at this meeting, but we didn't want to delay it, and we'd like to go ahead, at least with the presentation, to show you exactly what we're looking at doing here. What I'd like to kind of start off with is, Roger, do you can any, it's just a brief kind of explanation to show you exactly the way the original re-subdivision had been approved. This is something that's been approved, been recorded, and is of record at this time. The original basically had three different detention areas on it. The three areas consisted of a detention area, a large detention area here, a detention area over here, and a detention area over here. There were three kind of obvious, not particularly good ideas as far as the detention within the subdivision. What we were approached with from the city is if we could do something to eliminate some of those detention areas. And so what was accomplished through Mr. Judas taking upon himself was to purchase additional property. What we did is, there was an old dilapidated rundown house that was in this particular location in this area. That property was purchased by Elmhurst Builders and Developers. The house was subsequently torn down. That then became an increased detention area. And then there was also an acre of detention surface area that was purchased from the Lanier Pond, which is to the west of this project, or to the east, excuse me. And there was an agreement entered into between Elmhurst Builders and Developers and Laner to be able to use that detention area. And subsequently, with that combined additional detention, the requirement of the additional lot and the one acre surface of, from the Lanier Pond, we were able to come up with calculations to eliminate these two rather obvious detention areas, eliminating them. And so what we were trying to do is, by eliminating these detention areas, we have now basically acquired this area. This is going to be space that will be attached over here as open space for that particular lot, and we were left with this particular parcel of property. Roger, could you put the second one on? At this point, the way the project now works out... Give it up a little bit, yeah. Maybe raise that, that's about it, okay. With this additional detention area now available, and with the detention area that was purchased from Laner, what we are proposing at this point is to take these existing lots, which were there before, and to expand them, to make them a little larger back here, so that this particular portion of the detention area is now part of these lots. We then reconfigured the two lots that were put over here, just by reconfiguring them to come out to Pine. The only advantage to, that we are actually getting out of this is that there's an additional lot that we are now seeking to create, which is all in conformance with the appropriate zoning that was approved for this project. We're not seeking, there's no variances, there's nothing that's required for that. It's just basically using space that was originally set up for detention that we have been able to eliminate. And that constitutes, really, the total of the modification that we're seeking here. We've increased the large detention area and combined it in one area, put some off-site in the Laner detention, and basically with this additional space, we've combined and blended it into the existing subdivision, and we are looking just for the creation of one single-family lot. And that pretty much is what we're here today to seek approval for. I'm certainly open to any questions or comments.
Alderman Police.
One question on that all the way in the corner here. So that's no longer going to be a retention pond?
That's no longer, that's going to be part of this particular area. It's all going to be green space connected with that lot. That's correct. That will be part, it's actually planned to be incorporated into this particular lot for the townhome that's going to be placed there.
Alderman Coles.
Mr. Zimmerman, I looked at that property, and that's a good idea. I have one question. How are you going to run, they've already bricked in the retention pond on the north side of Potter. That's already been done. That looks good. He's done a real good job on it. And how would you run drainage water? You're going to go under Potter, or you're going to cut Potter and then put it in, and then resurface the end of Potter?
All of, well, Potter is not included in the project, but all of the drainage is designed to run basically off into that area as it was before. So with the way that the elevations are going to be configured with these houses being built here, everything will be flowing into that area, and this detention area is connected by underground pipe to the Laner detention.
I know that.
So everything will basically be flowing towards that area through the appropriate storm. We did have this reviewed by the engineer, Bennis, who was referred to us from the city, and we also, I believe, had Mr. Graff comment on it also, and they basically indicated that it would serve functionally for the handling of the storage of the drainage.
I have one more question. Where are the other two townhouses going to be on the north side?
The two town...
They've got one up now.
They have one up, there is one detention, and it's hard for me to read, but there's one townhome here, one townhome here, and one townhome here.
Oh, I know, but, okay, there's only two on, there's only going to be two on the north side. I thought there were supposed to be three.
No, just two.
But there's just two, okay. And the one I, that's in the, in the, by Arbor Street, I believe it is, Arbor Lane?
Mm-hmm.
That one I know about, that one.
Yes.
Okay. No problem. Everything looks good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask, how many homes are you putting up besides the three condominiums?
I believe, Frank, how many lots do we have on there? Mr. Lucchese is the architect for Elmhurst Builders and Developers. He's here in place of Mr. Judas. I think there's 13 single-family lots.
Thirteen homes you're putting up?
Correct.
And they'll be running about how much to the public?
Well...
Cost-wise?
Mm-hmm. You're talking about retail sales to the consumer? What do you figure the sales?
I believe Mr. Judas would like to keep them around $500,000.
$500,000.
I haven't seen the market analysis, but I would invest the price.
Okay. What improvements are you making on streets?
The improvements, according to our annexation agreement, are basically to put in a partial street for Pine. That was it.
And Arbor.
And Arbor, and this entire street, Arbor Lane, is going in as a full street.
Okay. Now, on Potter, on the original plan that was brought in, you were going to do that, but before the approval was given, you took that out. So Potter isn't included at all?
Potter was not included in the annexation or the subdivision approval.
Okay. You say 13 homes, 13?
I believe it's 13 lots, yes, sir.
Okay. What I'd like to see is something done on Potter. Not asking you to do the whole street or anything, but I think it would be reasonable to ask you to put in, as long as the houses are along there, to put in the sidewalks and gutters at least. I think the cost of that probably would be around what, I think Ross told me, about 40, 40 to 45,000 at the most for sidewalks on Potter and the curbs?
I'm not sure. Pardon? I was not privy to that conversation.
No, you weren't there. I know you were at the meeting.
But I do know that it was run past our city engineer, and I seem to recollect there was a figure of somewhere between 60 and 80,000 dollars for the curb and gutter and the sidewalks.
Is that, can I ask Gary, is that what it was going to be? Because Ross had figured out approximately 28,000 for the sidewalks.
I think Dave did, but I'm not sure Gary is aware of that conversation either.
I don't think Roger and I are both out of the loop on this one.
Well, what I'm asking is if you would, if the builder would be willing to at least not do the street, but at least to put in the sidewalks alongside the houses there on Potter and the curbs.
Well, I don't have the authority to say yes or no. That's something that I would, unfortunately, Mr. Judas not being here, it's very difficult for me to give you any kind of answer. I would certainly present that to him, and if that would be something that the city is considering, I would perhaps ask that perhaps we pass it then this evening to allow me to have an adequate opportunity to discuss it with Mr. Judas, and I can maybe follow up with staff, and we can talk about it further, and then maybe bring this up at the next meeting. But unfortunately, I just do not have the authority to agree to that type of an expenditure.
I'd rather, I think I'd rather wait till the next meeting. What you're doing there in getting rid of those small ponds, that's an excellent idea. I think that's great, and just to have the one detention pond would be much better. But I would like to have some kind of an agreement from the builder on doing those curbs and give him a chance to think about it, and perhaps come back in two weeks and let us know what he would like to do, rather than trying to make a decision tonight without knowing.
I certainly understand that. I do want to point out, and I'm sure the council is aware of this, is that there has been a considerable expenditure of funds by the procurement of that other lot and the procurement of the additional detention from Laner. And again, the only benefit that he's getting is the one lot, and I don't know that that one lot necessarily justifies all of the expenditures he spent, but it does enhance the project, and I think that it works to the benefit of the community as well as to the city itself. So certainly, he is not opposed to trying to cooperate with the city, that's for sure. I mean, obviously, just by the mere fact as to the expenditures he already has done to create what we think is a very, very nice community in an area that was rundown and dilapidated. I'm certain Mr. Judas would consider some of these things, but again, I'd like the opportunity to discuss that.
And we appreciate him doing all these things because it will look a lot better there, but we would like to have him do something in, you know, in addition to Potter Street because the houses will be at least backing onto the Potter Street, and I think it might be a reasonable request. So what I'd like to do is make a table, a motion to table to the next, 27th, to the March 27th meeting?
March 27th would be two weeks from today, and would be another available committee date. The other committee date for PCB would be April 10th.
No, I'd rather not hold him off that long. I'd like to do it as soon as we can, but I think, do you think he's going to be out of the hospital so he can?
Frank, do you think he'll be available by the time?
He should be.
I think the 27th would be fine.
The 27th would be okay. So I'll make that motion to table the 27th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, you want him to comment, or there's no comments on table, I'm afraid?
No, there is no comments on motion table, but I do have a question for Roger after you're done.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Noack, on the property that's between lots 12 and 13, does that have an existing house on it, and we did not require at that time the sidewalk to be placed in front of that house? Looks like there's a gap in the proposed plan here.
Mayor, that property is vacant, and I believe it is owned by the individual just adjacent to the south of that, off of a Montrose address, I believe.
So if at any time in the future that does get developed, on a single lot of record, do we require them to put in the sidewalk?
In order to make it contiguous with the rest, that would be, that would be a requirement we can place on them. It's, it's something that is not necessarily done in every instance throughout the city, but because of the fact that this is a new development, it has been the council's wish to have, to have sidewalks placed in most of these new developments.
Maybe it'll be a little more specific in my question. Since this is an existing lot of record, can you require that at that time that they get a building permit, they put the sidewalk in front of that lot?
We don't have anything in place that would require them to do that on an individual basis.
Okay.
I think we'd want to talk to them at least and see if that was possible. It'd be kind of weird to have a stretch just in front of one house without a sidewalk.
Do that.
Mr. Zimmer, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next item is a report, and really not a recommendation at this point, but the reason it came up is the mayor asked me to look into water conservation. One of the reasons is the water increase in price that we're getting from the city of Chicago, plus I understand that they're going to be reducing the amount of water that DuPage County can use or can take out of Chicago. So if you would, Joey, if you can put up the first, just for quick background, this is the Great Lakes Basin. The area in light green around the lakes is the area where water flows into the lakes, the individual lakes. And on the next slide, if you would, going down to just Lake Michigan, it shows the, again, the basin area and where water flows back into the lake. I think everybody's read about the drop in the height of the lake, in Lake Michigan, of the water in Lake Michigan, and they're not sure why it's happening, but it continues to go down. Plus, there's a problem in that they're forecasting, the experts, in quote, are forecasting almost a 40% increase in residency in the DuPage County area. Now, if we can go to the last one, and if you can push it down farther, the part of Illinois that's in the Great Lakes watershed or basin is a very thin line right alongside Chicago. The pink area, if you can see that on your, on your own app, it's just this area right over here, and the line almost disappears as you get into the Chicago area. Now, here's DuPage County next to it, but not in the Great Lakes Water Basin. By talking about the Great Lakes Water Basin is what we're saying is that water does not flow into the lakes if you're not in the Great Lakes Water Basin. A couple of years ago, the governors of all the states that do surround the Great Lakes, as well as the people in charge up in Canada, had a, signed, all signed a Great Lakes Compact. They call it a Great Lakes Compact. It was, it was to significantly limit the diversion of the Great Lakes water from municipalities' use in counties with at least some jurisdiction inside the Great Lakes Basin, and it spells out the standards for conservation for that water resource. It's kind of interesting that in Wisconsin, just outside the Great Lakes Basin, there's a town that's been fighting now for a couple of years to get Lake Michigan water, and they haven't been able to. And what's a little scary about this Great Lakes Compact is that the original agreement said that any governor could challenge the right of any other state to have water taken out of the, out of Lake Michigan or any of the other Great Lakes. In other words, DuPage County is not in the Great Lakes Basin, and one of the rules they have is that if you take water out, you've got to replace it. There's no way for us to take the water we buy from Chicago and put it back into Lake Michigan. It goes into the rest of the state, which is actually the Mississippi River Basin. So we're getting water now because somebody's being nice to us, to be honest with you. And in the future, this isn't something that has to be done next week or next month, but in the future, there's more and more arguments about restricting water out of the, out of Lake Michigan, in Illinois and in other states where the water is not returned directly back into the lakes. There's a large water bottling company, I think it's, I'm not positive, but I think it's the Arctic Mountain or something, and they're, they're in court about it, actually. And they're, the states are stopping them from bottling water out of Lake Michigan because it's, the water level keeps going down. You also have water pollution, which is causing problems, a lot of problems in that lake. So what we're getting now is basically a gift of water from Lake Michigan. And my fear is that sometime in the future, whether it's two years or five years from now, they're going to say, we're not going to want to reduce your water supply, we're going to cut it off. And they could do that according to this Great Lakes Compact. The only thing I can see that we can do about it really is to get into conservation in a pretty heavy way, to show the other states and Illinois that we are doing everything we can to conserve water, such as, one plan that El Paso did was they require every builder who builds more than 10, or anything up to 10,000 square feet, to replace six older toilets in town. Most of this, most of the residences in Wood Dale are older than 1985. All those residents have the old water toilets that require at least three gallons of water or something like that to flush. They're, they, what they did is required every builder to replace at least six toilets in town to the new low-flush type, the gallon and a half type of thing. There's also been talk about, some states, hold on, let me check here, about lawn sprinkling. In the summertime, we usually allow every second day, or whatever number of your house is, you can, you can water your lawn, but there's a lot of landscapers that are telling me that that's really not a good idea because if you water a lawn for two hours, you're just wetting the top couple of inches, and the roots won't go growing down, looking for water, they'll come right back to the top. So if we have a dry spell of water, the grass dies. Whereas if you leave it alone, the grass may go dormant in the dry spell, but will come back on its own in most instances. Some states are giving, actually giving out barrels for people to put under their downspouts, and then use that water for, you know, doing the lawns and so forth. Some places are even letting people go back to wells as long as they're connected only to an outside sprinkler. That might be an idea. Now, I'm not pushing any specific thing here, but what I'm saying is that it's something we've got to think about in the next, sometime this year, about what kind of restrictions, what kind of programs we want to use. Do we want to use a toilet retrofit program like El Paso does? And I understand most, almost every one of their toilets in town now have been changed over because of this new ordinance they have. So I'm not asking for a motion tonight, but I'm asking everybody to think about it. And it's interesting that this will not only be just the Building, Planning, Building and Zoning Committee, it will include the Public Works Committee, it'll include the Finance Committee, it'll include all the committees actually in different ways on how to take care of this problem, so that hopefully in the future we can show we've been very conscious of our conservation of water overall, and that they won't cut us off, hopefully. So that's it for what it's worth of this. If anybody has any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer them, but I don't want to take up a lot of time. I can answer questions individually as well unless you have something, Lee Burton and Dolly McColes.
I got one, one thing that we did in 1977 when we ran out of water. Everybody put a brick in their old toilet bowl, and that saved approximately about two quarts or three quarts of water in your, in your old type toilet bowls.
Right, a couple of bricks will do that.
That's something that anybody can do. All they do is lift it up, put a brick in there, a couple of bricks, and that, that solves a problem. That'll conserve on water, too.
But we can't, we can't govern that. We can't tell people to do that.
I know that.
Or check on it in any way.
That's what we told them in '77 to do, and they did it.
I think we, matter of fact, I think I did that for a while, but then the water problem disappeared, so I took the bricks out, so...
Yes, well, that's after we put a couple wells in.
Any other questions or comments? So I'd like to be able to talk to other aldermen on the side with any ideas they have, as well as any citizens that want to give me an email or a ring and have any ideas and ways to conserve water in Wood Dale, so we don't run into the problem of no water in the future. Thank you. Items for future meetings, tree preservation ordinance. Anything else? Alderman Police.
Being we have no economic development tonight, and this is planning and zoning, today we, I was at the Elgin O'Hare Western Bypass. I think we should move forward during some Economic Development Committee next week, or in two weeks, on the Thorndale Corridor especially, because there was a lot of input over there today, and basically the only thing Wood Dale could say was, well, we want to interchange at Wood Dale and Thorndale. Everybody else has plans, and we're way behind. I think we should put it on the agenda for economic development.
Excellent idea. Anybody else? Ask for a motion therefore to adjourn? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, we are adjourned. Thank you.
I'm calling to order the Public Works Committee meeting of March 13, 2008. Will the minute taker please reflect the same members present, including myself, who attended late tonight? I declare a quorum present. I make a motion to approve minutes dated February 28, 2008. Is there a second?
Second.
And a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is report and recommendation for industrial pretreatment program for a selection committee, and I was reviewing the information on this, Mr. Holm, and it's indicated that this is going to be somewhat of a lengthy process. Can you give us more background on that and, and what's involved? Because sometimes when I think about it, I think, well, the government is going to tell us what they want, and then we're going to try and report on what they want. So we'll get the list from the government, or, and that's probably oversimplifying it. So can you tell us what this is all about?
Sure. We did have an inspection this past summer from the U.S. EPA regarding our industrial pretreatment program. First, the industrial pretreatment program is the government's program to regulate industries. We've been talking about heavy metals lately. That's one of the things that would be regulated. Any chemical discharge, any metal discharge, any toxic discharge, and obviously the categories are wide and far, that come from industries, they're regulated by the U.S. government. We, as a local municipality, have to monitor to ensure, we're kind of the monitoring agency at the local level. We run an industrial pretreatment program to meet these guidelines. We did have an inspection. The inspection went overall favorably, but we were made aware and, and basically brought, not necessarily brought to our attention, but informed that we will have to start meeting some of these new regulations, and I think that's what you're asking. One of the new regulations is physically an inspection and an inventory of every business in town going in. in town, going into that business, doing a visual inspection of the entire property to identify any potential sources for discharge, basically interviewing the business to find out what the nature of their business is, what type of chemicals they use, what type of chemicals they may discharge, what type of treatment they may have. As you can imagine, going through every business in town, that's going to be a pretty extensive We will have a good starting list with our business licenses, but that may not necessarily be comprehensive. There'll probably be ninety-nine percent of them, but the person who does this will still have to physically walk door to door, knock on all the doors, and then make appointments or whatever it takes to get into every single business. That's part of the assessment that the US EPA will require. We will also need to do various code and ordinance updates, some ordinances which we have, which the federal government had, which haven't been updated for many, many years. So those are all in this as well. So it's really administrative paperwork side, as well as, I think, the big item is the field inspection side. The cost of this was included in the proposed oh-eight, oh-nine budget. As we indicated, we did go out to a number of firms, and basically, a lot of the biggest, biggest, and yet some small companies too, environmental firms in the Chicagoland area. We did at least receive a response from four firms. Clark Deets and Black and Beach are two national firms. In fact, Black and Beach is an international firm, one of the biggest in the world. They're just, we're too small for them. They really weren't interested in participating with us. The other two, Backstreet Movement and Huff and Huff, did submit to us, submitted qualifications to us. And that brings us then to tonight. In order to select this consultant, we are requesting that a committee be formed, a subcommittee be formed, to sit through and interview the consultants and then make a recommendation to the Public Works Committee for selection.
Alderman Wesley?
Gary, could you tell me how much it was budget for, you know, a hand?
I believe a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty thousand. I've got a budget book here for you.
What, is it coming out of the Water and Sewer Operation Fund? If I'm mistaken, it's a hundred and ten.
Okay, yeah, I knew it was a hundred and ten or a hundred and twenty.
Yeah. Mike, may I continue with that? Isn't it also supposed to be, if we decide to move forward, study of treatment plants too, is that coming out of this one too?
That same line item? I believe that same line item in the budget is all in there. I mean, but, I mean, as we prepare our budgets, we're directed to have a grand total for a particular fund, but then break that grand total down into what the tasks are. So in this case, a hundred and ten thousand of that task is for industrial pretreatment.
So a hundred and ten is, I believe, maybe my figures are wrong.
I think I saw a hundred and twenty when I just looked in here.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, genius. It is a hundred and twenty thousand out of Water and Sewer Administration Fund.
Okay.
Under professional services, a hundred and twenty thousand for the industrial pretreatment, a hundred and fifty thousand for the treatment plant study.
Okay.
Both in that same line. The total budget for that line is the three hundred and five thousand dollar.
Gary, so, man, so you're looking for approval of this tonight when we haven't even finished the budget process? I mean, I just-
No, all we are doing tonight is to request that a subcommittee be established for the purpose of interviewing the consultants.
Okay.
That's all we're doing tonight.
Okay, that's all I want. Well, thank you.
And then, once we do hire the consultants, are they going to be charged with both the inspection of businesses and the code and ordinance update proposals?
Yes, that would be their general scope, would be to perform both of those services.
Mr. Mayor?
Baxter and Woodman have already been found to be qualified. Why would they need to RFQ a second time?
This scope of, it's not, it's not, it's not qualified in the manner that you're speaking. This is, this is a project, in this case, industrial pretreatment, and then their qualifications to perform industrial pretreatment. URS is another consultant that's on our qualified list, but URS is not qualified to do industrial pretreatment. They don't have anyone in their office that can do industrial pretreatment. So this is, this is looking at it as a project-specific qualification.
Why would you go with the RFQ instead of the RFP?
Again, because the selection process, the state, the state law dictates that you select professional services based on RFQ.
And then you do the RFP afterwards of multiple firms?
Yeah, you can negotiate a scope of services.
And then, so tonight, you're looking for us to select two people, Frank, two?
No, all we're looking for tonight is to form the, form the subcommittee to then begin an interview with the two responses that we received.
Great, so do you want, like, us to name two aldermen to sit on the committee tonight? Okay.
Yes.
So I have a thought on, I'm gonna throw out, oh, you're gonna do the appointment?
Yeah, I'll take the recommendation.
I was thinking like Alderman Lewitin and Alderman Coles, since he sat on the last one, and Alderman Lewitin, seems to have an interest in water treatment. Alderman Wesley?
I, you know, I was just trying to figure out, I mean, I was a little confused on RFQ.
Okay, so then I'll ask, Mr. Mayor, will you suggest two aldermen or?
Actually, I had a third who also volunteered to serve, so, unless they've changed their minds, so I'll let staff know. But certainly, yeah, we'll form a-